... I agree. And she took after the... God, to the parlor, so that there were all these gods, make all your tears, the worst reaching eight by...
Really looking at that. But today, we're searching for that shit.
You know, drift is medical, we should...
We say part of us is.
Really? I was... I'm like a planner.
What's our strategy?
Yeah, we have a little money.
Like right now. You ready? It's really on the assessment. We've got a good... Increase the percentage of students...
To get back.
We have to. We truly got... Yeah.
It's a long case.
Yeah. This table is sweet.
You said...
Hi, everybody.
Yes.
It's crying.
Okay.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this fall 2019 Planning and Work Session of the North Carolina State Board of Education. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. You know, we're so fortunate, over the next three days, to be meeting on the beautiful campus of North Carolina A&amp;T University and one of our approved education preparation providers, and we so appreciate their agreeing to be our host for this event. We know that we'll enjoy being on their campus and hearing from their chancellor in just a few moments. I'd also like to thank our host board member, Vice Chair Alan Duncan, for hosting us. We're meeting in his Piedmont Triad area, and Alan, thank you for hosting us as well. You know, when we go on the road for these Planning and Work Sessions, it does come at some additional work, particularly for our board staff and others who put this meeting together. And so I'd like to particularly thank Deanna Henrietta, Lawrence, Don, and Alan for not only the technology support but all the things that went into making this a successful meeting. So would you join me in thanking them? And Deanna, you might have a few housekeeping items for us to be aware of?
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Thank you all for being here today. I am so excited to get this Planning and Work Session going. As Chair Davis stated, board members, typically you have a room to retreat to for personal phone calls, et cetera, when we are in a board meeting. That space for you today is directly across the hallway. There's a sign in front of your room for you to take any personal calls, handle any personal business that you may need to attend to while we're here on the campus. Tomorrow, we'll be in a different room, but that is the room for today. Also, restrooms, that will be important as well today, so you just walk right out the door. Restrooms are directly to the left. If you need anything, please just give me a text and I will be sure to assist you. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. In addition, delighted to welcome our two newest board members. We'll make that formal welcome on Thursday at our official board meeting, but I'm delighted to introduce Donna Tipton Rogers and Wendell Hall as our newest members of the State Board of Education. We are so glad to be up to full strength, and we really welcome your participation. Jump right in. We know we'll benefit from your perspectives. I'd also like to thank members of the Department of Public Instruction for attending this meeting and some are listening in. You know, these meetings are not just for the state board, they're really for the team, the board and Department of Public Instruction as we plan the work of the state public education system, and we welcome your participation in the discussion today and appreciate you being with us. You know, 65 years ago, the United States Supreme Court in Brown versus Board of Education underscored the importance of equity, equality, and necessary resources in our schools. Today, these priorities remain true, and they are the reason for the board's focus on the guiding principles of equity and whole child found in our recently approved strategic plan. Without this focus, student success for every student will continue to elude us. Similarly, last week, the National Assessment of Educational Progress released the most recent assessment of student academic achievement across our nation. The NAEP scores across the nation and for North Carolina students, as well as the 2018-19 North Carolina Academic Results, send the same chilling message that too many of our students are not ready to successfully compete in the brutally competitive world that our nation has created. Stubbornly low academic results persist across the full spectrum of our students, not limited to, but most notably, in the fastest-growing segments of our students: children of color, children who are learning English, children not born into a middle-class or above family. And if current trends hold, and there are no signs that they will change, in a few years, these students, who historically have been the least prepared, will make up the majority of our student population. They'll also be the majority of our workforce in business, in healthcare, in government, and in our military. The NAEP scores and our own assessments clearly show that persistent student performance gaps stem in large part from gaps in opportunity and access. So it's up to us, particularly those of us in the majority with the power, to take the necessary steps to change the system: immediate, intentional, persistent, and sustainable change to North Carolina's public education system to ensure that the future social, economic, security, and well-being of all of our children are in place, and in doing so, ensure our own futures. That's what the strategic plan for the North Carolina Public School System is all about, and that's the purpose of this Planning and Work Session over the next couple of days. Achieving our goals will require increased partnership with districts, schools, county commissions, the General Assembly, the governor, communities, and parents, partnerships that cross all elements that at times tend to divide us. It's essential that we see our differences as strengths, if for no other reason than that our children's future, yours and mine, are inextricably linked. And so that's the call to action for us today and every day, a call that we must embrace to eliminate the opportunity gaps for our students across our state so that our students can lift their own academic achievement and compete and win for generations to come. So now I'd like to pause for just a moment and invite my colleagues, any that would be willing to share, board members and/or advisors, on their perspectives on this opportunity that we have before us and reflect on the journey we're on together. Any board members like to share their perspectives on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buxton.
I couldn't help but be struck when I walked from the parking lot, and thanks to Deanna Townsend Smith for getting me from the parking lot. As you walked by the four buildings that carry the names of the Greensboro Four: Franklin McCain's son was a classmate of mine at Carolina and had the great honor to know him and his dad, but to see the four names of folks who put themselves on the line for this state and this nation in a more just future is a pretty powerful testament to the kind of work I think we are called to do for our community here in North Carolina. So I appreciate the setting, the degree to which this campus celebrates its heroes and leaders that it's given to our state, and I think the charge it levels at us to be equal to that measure.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. I would add, their heroes are our heroes as well. Other comments? Ms. Kamitz.
A year ago, almost exactly today, I attended my first Planning and Work Session with this board. I had been on the board for one month, and our first day, the whole day, we were trained in equity awareness, and it was the first time I'd ever heard the term groundwater before, but it is certainly that day made it very meaningful. before, but it is certainly, that day made it very meaningful, and that was a profound experience for me. Working with Deanna and James and Allison on the strategic plan was a very powerful follow-up for me to that Planning and Work Session last year, and in the past year, I have come to believe that this board has an urgent responsibility to do this work that we've just mapped out for ourselves in our strategic plan. I went to, a couple weeks ago, to a conference called Color of Education, and one of the sessions I went to, just so I could get this right, was called State and Local Policymakers' Perspectives on Racial Equity. And the panelists were two members of the General Assembly and two local board members. There was somebody missing from that table, and I think it was us. We can't let that happen again. We need to lead this effort. We need to find short-term solutions that our LEAs and our schools can start working on now, and then we need to do the long-term work of policy change and working with the legislature to get things accomplished there. So I'm going to let Free Bird, you're going to finish that thought right, what we've talked about at this table, but it's an exciting time to be involved in this work.
And Chairman Sun?
Yes. Kenny?
Ms. Kamitz and I were just discussing how much momentum we feel at a multitude of levels. Dr. Townsend Smith and I had the honor and opportunity to present the strategic plan at the North Carolina ACID Conference. Got a lot of positive feedback about understanding at the state level what the strategic plan is and its focus on access and opportunity. With the Governor's Drive Summit coming up on December 10th, with My Future NC and the multiple levels that were on that stage when they presented that strategic plan and moving that needle from 1.3 to 2 million post-secondary opportunities, we just, we were talking about that there's a wave right now of momentum with Leandro Commission, and I believe that this state is ready to take action, and so we were just talking about the opportunity that we have as a board to do that and to lead that.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
Chairman Davis.
Yes, Dr. Ochtendine.
I do have a thought. Traveling to the campus, and this is an absolutely gorgeous campus, and very friendly people because I must have stopped 25, 25 individual students and staff and others to finally get me here, and so I've got some letters to write on their behalf to the chancellor. But, you know, traveling here, I came down a boulevard, or I guess it's a boulevard or a freeway, I'm not sure. It's not too far away from this campus, and it's named after Lonny Revels Jr. Now, he may not mean very much to you, but he means a lot to me because he moved to Greensboro probably, I would say, I don't know, more than five, six decades ago, and he and his wife stood up tall and firmly and frequently for the rights of American Indians. And many American Indians today and then live in Guilford County and over in the neighboring counties. So he would be very disappointed if he knew Olivia Ochtendine, and let me add this, many of the things that I have been fortunate to do and serve on and speak for as an American Indian educator, I can look back to Lonny Revels Jr. or his wife, Ruth, and they had something to do with where I am today. Maybe a call, an email, meeting them at conferences, "How are you doing, Olivia?" Always, they were, they've been with me. And so Lonny is probably going to be with me the next few days. He's probably going to nudge me to speak up. He's probably going to nudge me not to speak up occasionally, but I just want to highlight Lonny Revels Jr. and his wife both passed away. Ms. Ruth passed away in 2016, about seven weeks before my husband passed away, and they were great giants among American Indians in Robinson County and around the state, but they are near and dear to me, and on behalf of them, I'm speaking for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
I'll share mine.
Ms. White.
It's been almost four years since I joined the board, and I'll be frank and say that I feel like we've barely moved the needle. I feel like we are constantly in the process of circling around the issues that we think to be true, that we know to be true, and as of the recent release of the NAEP data and the information that you will hear today from Dr. Gary Henry and Ms. Susan Allred, we will have irrefutable proof that we must do something different. So a plan is a plan until we take action, and it will take all of us together, using our individual spheres of influence collectively, to build a team to stop doing what we've been doing. That comes in three parts. It comes in acknowledging where we've been, in recognizing who we are today, and then centrally focusing on who we want to be. And if we can get everyone on the same page about where we want to be, then the action will be effective. I'm not sure that we understand the work that needs to be done and that everyone in here needs to lay down their briefcase, and by that means, when you left home this morning, you brought your preconceived ideas and your notions and your thoughts from where you've been, but we must work together collectively to move the needle. So my goal, my personal goal, is that in the next four years, that when I'm having this conversation, and I'm going to be so thankful to give somebody else the opportunity to serve, that I can say, "The day we met at NCA&amp;T was the day that we began the difficult job of moving the needle."
Thank you, Ms. White. Other thoughts? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, Ms. White. That made me really think about something that I have been grappling with. All of a sudden, I have been thrust into these two different worlds where I am visiting schools with the children daily across the state, but also in this adult sphere of policy and briefcases. And that comment of leaving your briefcase, I charge us to think about the lens through which we see each policy and be intentional about your lens, because that's how implicit bias, and that's how a lot of these different issues creep into our conversations, is when we're not intentional about what lens we're bringing to the table. And I have really solidified my lens to this role of how does each and every decision that I'm asked to look at affect the most vulnerable children of North Carolina? Because we know those are the children that need our voice, those are the children that need to be protected by our policy. So I charge us to think about what lens you're going to look at these issues through and be intentional about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Well, I think we're off to a great start. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you. It just goes to show, we've got a terrific group of board and advisors and great work ahead, and we're going to step up to the challenge. So now I'd like to turn to Vice Chair Duncan for an introduction of our host.
Thank you, Chair Davis.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chair Davis. It's truly a privilege today to introduce somebody who I consider a great friend and somebody who I frankly admire tremendously, Dr. Harold Martin, Chancellor of NCA&amp;T University. Aggie pride is the phrase you're going to hear around this campus a lot, and if there's anyone who has brought about a full-throated cry of aggie pride, it's Dr. Martin. Say a little bit about what this school means to this community, maybe as a follow-up to some of the comments that board members just made. This campus has led this community through so many different issues. Mr. Buxton made reference earlier to the Greensboro Four, the February 1, 1960 sit-in. And interestingly, Dr. McCain's grandson is now here at North Carolina A&amp;T and is a star football player for a team that has a lot of stars. It's a legacy that goes on and on. It's a legacy that's impacted the public schools of this state. Several of the former chancellors of this university have elementary or high schools or middle schools named for them. It gives you some idea of the impact, and I note that because I'd also point out, there have only been 12 chancellors of this university despite its long legacy, which is quite remarkable. Dr. Martin is the 12th. In addition, some of the notable alumni, in addition to Dr. McCain and others, like Ron McNair, the famous astronaut, in one of our newest schools in Guilford County, is named for Dr. McNair, who also was an enormously important person to our space program and serves as one of the great examples for students in terms of what you can accomplish. He's a role model, and so many people here at North Carolina A&amp;T have been role models. I want to dispense with the traditional introduction of the wonderful academic credentials that Dr. Martin obtained. Trust me, he's got them. Also going to skip over the accolades and awards he's received through the year, because again, trust me, he's received many, and they're all well, well-deserved. Want to talk a little bit about how he has impacted education of our students before they get to higher education. Dr. Martin is a board member of the Ready for School, Ready for Life Initiative in Guilford County. That initiative, for those who don't know, is in the early childhood space from prenatal through age eight. He's very intensely involved in that, understands the science extremely well, and is one of the biggest supporters and pushers for why we need to be in that space if we're going to truly accomplish what we want for our children. So this is somebody who's from prenatal to post-higher education and truly involved in all parts. So in terms of our public schools in this county, Bennett College, which is a wonderful women's small college here, wanted to have a middle college program, and we wanted Bennett College to have a middle college program. Of course, the issue would be, it's an all-woman school, and so we had decided to move forward with the middle college there, but under the appropriate equality regulations, you would have to have an all-male school as well. Well, North Carolina A&amp;T immediately jumped forward to offer its services to provide a middle college for students who were not finding their place in the traditional public high schools. Since Dr. Martin's gotten here, he has worked hard to change the facilities for that program, worked very hard with the program, has gotten mentoring programs going on with his students, and I'm very proud to report, for several years running now, 100% of those students who were not fitting in are going to college, four-year college. It's really quite remarkable. It's remarkable what they're doing here. In addition to that, we wanted to start an early college STEM program. We have an early college program at Guilford College that's been very successful for a number of years, and we wanted to start an early college STEM program under the leadership of former Superintendent Mo Green. And Dr. Martin was instrumental in bringing that program, that public high school program, to this campus where the students work intensively on their high school criteria for the first two years and take all college courses the last two years, and very advanced science programs, because the engineering and science programs in this campus are wonderful, and the facilities are now great as a testament to the work that Dr. Martin has done on the fundraising side. And our students get access to that, and it has been just life-changing for a lot of students in terms of the education that they're receiving, the high quality of instruction that they're receiving. And I'm pleased to report, and I think Dr. Martin will confirm this, that they compete favorably with his own college students, that they earn their place here, even though they're not yet of college age. So there's another program in Guilford County called Say Yes, which is to provide supports for students who need them in the public schools and also provide an assurance that all children whose parents make less than $100,000 a year have the necessary resources to at least pay tuition. Dr. Martin's been extraordinarily supportive of that program, and his chief financial officer, Robert Pompey, has been incredibly important to the success of that program, including leading the finance side of things. So I think it's important to stop and note these accomplishments. North Carolina A&amp;T is so impressive and so on the rise that when I was watching their bowl game last year, a Howard graduate who used to play in pro football started saying, "This place is hot. Everybody wants to go there." And he said, "Unfortunately, that includes my daughter." And so apparently, he's lost his kids from his Howard leanings, and they're coming to North Carolina A&amp;T. The change in this campus in the last 10 years since Dr. Martin's been here is remarkable, and I don't know that I can try to put it in words, but I just ask you to look around and say, "This is a special place to be. It's a special atmosphere, and it's a special place." And I'm so pleased to hear people talk about how great the students were in directing us this morning. We all had a wonderful experience interacting with this great student body here, which I know something Dr. Martin will be very proud of. So I want to end this introduction by saying this: There are certain people in every community who make all the difference in the world. Dr. Martin is one of those absolute key people in this community who makes all the difference in the world for how this community moves forward, how it thinks about equity, how we work hard to have a community that cares about all people on all days and in all ways. And we know that we're short on the mark, but he helps lead us and inspire us to reach out for that mark on a daily basis, and I'm so grateful to him. I told you I wouldn't go through all his past accolades, but I am going to touch upon one he's about to receive, because I think it's worth noting. In the next week or so, Dr. Martin will receive the Thurgood Marshall Award for Educational Leadership, which is a remarkable and a very important national award. We are so proud of him for that and so proud of how he's done the kinds of things that makes him so deserving for that award. So indeed, it's been a pleasure and a thrill for me to have the opportunity to introduce somebody who I consider my friend and who I admire greatly, Dr. Harold Martin.
Alan, thanks very much. Thanks very much for any introduction, and certainly thank you for being on our campus as well. We are absolutely excited about providing an opportunity to host the conversations you're having on our campus and in this community. What Alan did not say is that my wife and I are not only graduates of North Carolina A&amp;T, but we're also graduates of public schools of one state in Forsyth County. And that passion for education and what education has done for my wife and me, quite honestly, is what drives our passion for what we do here at North Carolina A&amp;T as well. So much so that with all the opportunities for our two sons, we felt that public schools would be the best place for them for a whole host of reasons, quite frankly, and it has certainly served them well also. I want to spend a few minutes talking a little bit about what we do here to give you some sense of why we are excited about what's happening on our campus, but why so critically important for what we do here at our university, more than just simply educating our students, but also very critically engaging with business leaders and community leaders in this community in such a way that we are hoping to create increasing levels of opportunity for not only success in education, but also creating opportunities for competitive employment opportunities in this community, this region, and the state as well. As I indicated, I grew up here in the Piedmont Triad region, my wife and I, and we also grew up at a time when there were significant numbers of job opportunities, especially manufacturing tobacco. We've heard the story, tobacco, textiles, furniture manufacturing, and I happened to be one of those individuals as a kid growing up that had an opportunity to work in the hot, sweaty manufacturing shops of RJ Reynolds Tobacco Company, and also had an opportunity to work in the hot, sweaty...
out for that mark on a daily basis and I'm so grateful to him. I told you I wouldn't go through all his past accolades, but I am going to touch upon one he's about to receive because I think it's worth noting. In the next week or so, Dr. Martin will receive the Thurgood Marshall Award for Educational Leadership, which is a remarkable and a very important national award. We are so proud of him for that and so proud of how he's done the kinds of things that makes him so deserving for that award. So indeed, it's been a pleasure and a thrill for me to have the opportunity to introduce somebody who I consider my friend and who I admire greatly, Dr. Harold Martin.
Alan, thanks very much. Thanks very much for any introduction and certainly thank you for being on our campus as well. We are absolutely excited about providing an opportunity to host the conversations you're having on our campus and in this community. What Alan did not say is that my wife and I are not only graduates of North Carolina A&amp;T, but we're also graduates of public schools of one state in Forsyth County. And that passion for education and what education has done for my wife and me, quite honestly, is what drives our passion for what we do here at North Carolina A&amp;T as well. So much so that with all the opportunities for our two sons, we felt that public schools would be the best place for them for a whole host of reasons, quite frankly, and it has certainly served them well also. I want to spend a few minutes talking a little bit about what we do here to give you some sense of why we are excited about what's happening on our campus, but why so critically important for what we do here at our university, more than just simply educating our students, but also very critically engaging with business leaders and community leaders in this community in such a way that we are hoping to create increasing levels of opportunity for not only success in education, but also creating opportunities for competitive employment opportunities in this community, this region, and the state as well. As I indicated, I grew up here in the Piedmont Triad region, my wife and I. We also grew up at a time when there were significant numbers of job opportunities, especially manufacturing tobacco. We've heard the story, tobacco, textiles, furniture manufacturing. And I happened to be one of those individuals as a kid growing up that had an opportunity to work in the hot sweaty manufacturing shops of R.J. Reynolds Tobacco Company. And also had an opportunity to work in the hot sweaty tobacco fias in southern Virginia and my grandparents' tobacco farm every summer as a kid growing up and realizing the importance of hard work, but also realizing that the many job opportunities we had here in that sector of manufacturing, after textiles, tobacco, and furniture, hundreds of thousands of those jobs are now gone away. And what's important for us today is to find ways of creating opportunities to reinvent jobs as possibilities to entrepreneurship and innovation and the like, as well as we partner with the local businesses to keep them here, but also we are partnering in significant ways to attract industries to this region as well. Education plays a big part in that space. So let me share a little bit about what we are doing here on our campus. I'm going to come around a little bit so I can see as well. This is my 11th year as chancellor here at North Carolina A&amp;T, but I've spent higher education about 35 years now here in higher education in North Carolina. I'm an engineer by training. I love math and science and I remind our students on a regular basis, yes, I'm a geek. I love math and science. I love to say to our students, "We love having geeks on this campus." I generally use the phrase, "Nerves will rule the world." And I do believe that in many significant ways. And many of the jobs, as many of you are aware, that are growing globally are in STEM space. And so it's critically important and what we do here is stimulate at K-12 level our community college partners as well as our university, growth and opportunities to create more highly-prepared young people who love math and science and other disciplines as well, who are being readied for the marketplace, both here in the Piedmont Triad as well as throughout North Carolina. A&amp;T is one of the 16 full-year universities in the UNC system. We're one of the now five doctoral research universities in the UNC system. We are what's called an R2, a Research II Category Institution, based on the number of PhD programs we offer as well as the research volume we provide as an institution. Joining us in that group are East Carolina, UNC Charlotte, UNC Greensboro. And the newest addition to this group of institutions is UNC Wilmington. Just this year, having been approved by the Board of Governors to move to the category of R2 or doctoral research university. Our two flagship campuses, of course, are Chapel Hill and NC State. We have a very progressive, engaged, and pushy, demanding board. I like it that way, quite frankly. They are an array of very engaged corporate executives, business leaders, alums of our university as well, who have the highest expectations for the future of our university and the role we play. A very diverse, highly-engaged senior leadership team. They have a variety of backgrounds and experiences and work very hard to ensure that we are creating the very best and most competitive educational experience for our students we serve here at A&amp;T. These are our academic units, the various schools and colleges on our campus. When I arrived here in 2009, we had a variety of academic programs and various schools and colleges at that time. We were a university whose enrollment was only skied for seven years before my arrival. We had to do some dramatic things here to realign what we were doing to enhance our appeal to bright students to our university, as well as creating an array of degree programs that were much more aligned with the growing needs and interests of students and of this community. So we did what most universities tend to shy away from doing because it's such a dramatic and problematic issue, and that is we restructured our university. We took all of our academic programs, we tossed them out on the table figuratively, and we realigned them in schools and colleges in such a way that it created opportunities for us to plan for the future, hiring new faculty, creating new programs for the future, and enhancing the research that we do so that we are connecting much more significantly with the growing needs of this community. Out of that exercise came three new colleges, a liberal arts college that we call Arts, Humanities, and Social Sciences, a new college of Health Sciences, and a new college of Science and Technology. And out of these new programs came new deans. Almost all of our deans are deans who have been hired in the last five years. And in the last five years, we now have hired about 50% of the 700 faculty on this campus against this new restructuring. And out of this restructuring has come new degree programs at the PhD level, master's degree level, very few at the bachelor art level, whose skill sets are strategically focused on creating new degree programs at the intersection of the traditional programs we've offered on this campus, for example, that are demanding and exciting programs for incredibly bright students who are now being attracted to our university. We have pitched all that we do in a very competitive way against a competitive group of universities that we define to be our peers. Most of these are land-grant institutions. We are a land-grant institution in what's called an 1890 land-grant institution. NC State is an 1862 land-grant institution. In the strictest sense, all land-grant institutions are very similar. They offer big STEM, lots of engineering and science and agriculture and technology degree programs. These are the core array of degree programs that we analytically benchmark ourselves against. And I should say to you that every UNC system campus has a what's called a Board of Governors peer group. We're now going through a revising of this list for every UNC campus. These institutions for our university are similar in coniency class. They are similar in mission, land-grant institutions. Clemson is one of the more substantially recognized and aspirational peers on our list, but it's what drives us to be better at what we do. We are realizing 95% of all of our benchmarks against student success, enrollment growth, job placement, successes of our graduates, enhancements in our research against all those core peers. We are now, as a result of redefining our university and branding our institution in a more competitive way, you see the growth in our enrollment, growth at the doctoral level in masters and PhD students, and dramatic growth in our undergraduate student population. The profile of these bright young people says that any one of these students that have been admitted to our university today are admissible to most of the UNC system campuses. And this is a space we must be in and operate in if we're going to produce graduates at a competitive level year over year who are getting jobs. Most of these incredibly bright students are leaving this region, going to Charlotte or Raleigh-Durham, or they're leaving North Carolina. So one of the driving inspirational focus points for us is building relationships with our business and industry leaders in this community so that we're creating more jobs and framing more jobs for the future for this community, to just keep more of these bright kids in this community. We are capturing more statistics that talk about the percentage of our graduates who have jobs 36 and 90 days out from graduation. That data we are capturing, but I want to have some level of statistic that's shared with you, the demand for our graduates today. You can see the growth in corporations and agencies who are coming to our university year over year now to recruit the graduates for our university. We rank fourth in the UNC system in job placement of our graduates against all UNC campuses and our students rank third in compensation upon graduation when they enter the marketplace. I can sell that to any parent, to any student who is interested in coming to our university. That's a big deal for us. We're also third in research in the UNC system. As we continue to position a university as a doctoral research university, these are the research dollars that we've gone a year over year. We're third behind Chapel Hill and NC State. They have high-volume research. We'll grow in our research to $100 million a year over the next three years. We are in a great place to continue to see successes in our research. What's more important to them is what do we do with this research? How much innovation is derived from the research of our faculty, patents, patent disclosures, and the like? And then what do we do with that innovation? We want to commercialize that innovation, want to sell the patents and derive revenues for the institution. We also want to inspire our faculty and our graduate students to start companies in this community, to create jobs. And so we've spun out of our university in the last several years, five startup companies that have been, whose research occurred here in our research labs and are now creating innovation and we're now creating jobs in this community as well, which is critically important for us. Economic impact. Economic impact is a big deal for our university. As I indicated earlier, we are looking to partner with business leaders and community leaders of other universities in this community to create opportunities for retaining the organizations we have in this community who create jobs for us. But we're also looking to ensure that we are helping the state of North Carolina, Department of Commerce, the chambers, and economic development partnerships attract industries to North Carolina, especially high-paying competitive jobs for graduates of our universities. We have an impact of about over $1 billion today statewide, and that continues to grow. And we're intentionally driving that growth for our university. But we're also looking to ensure that we're having a direct impact here in what we call the Piedmont Triad region as well. But there's also the area that we're focusing on in particular that is important to our university as well. Greensboro, like many communities in America, are segmented by wealth, those who have wealth, those who don't have wealth. And oftentimes, that segment in our communities are also segmented by ethnicity of population. And so when you look at Greensboro, we're no different. And so what we look to do here in Greensboro is ensure that we, as a university, are not only driving focus on economic growth and prosperity of Greensboro, Piedmont Triad region in the whole, but we also are looking to drive economic growth and prosperity in East Greensboro, where there is low wealth compared to wealth in West Greensboro. So I want to make sure that I share that with you in particular for a variety of reasons. First, it's the right thing to do. Secondly, it is our home. It is where our university is located, quite honestly. And if we don't, from selfish reasons, ensure that we are enhancing the quality of life, wealth, retail, quality of housing in East Greensboro, it will stunt our growth. It will stunt our ability to ensure that we are creating an environment that allows very bright and talented students who want to attend our university to have access to the amenities that they've grown up accustomed to having access to. But as I indicated earlier, we are hiring lots of new faculty and staff. We are bringing hundreds of doctoral students to this community. And when you look at the number of people we're hiring, new PhD students we're bringing to this community and post-docs, these are incredibly smart people amongst the smartest, most educated individuals we're bringing to Greensboro. We want a share of those intelligent, well-educated, wealth-bearing individuals to live in East Greensboro, post-PhD coming to our university. That's a critical part of the role we play as a university as well. So you'll see that as an absolute critical part of the outgrowth of our university, land-grant institution, driving external partnerships and collaboration with this community and with state agencies as well. I'm not going to go through all of these. We have built more collaborations and partnerships with organizations, Guilford County Schools, all our community colleges in the region, universities in the region, Wake Forest, East High Point, UNC Greensboro, Guilford College, Bennett College. We have partnerships at all levels. These are successful collaborations and relationships, all again focused on creating seamless access to education, K-12, the community colleges are four-year institutions, focused on creating degree programs that stimulate providing graduates who have the skill sets that our employers need in this region, but also stimulating economic growth and prosperity for this region Lots of rankings, big rankings, a big deal. Parents want to know about the brand of your university, so do students, quite frankly. One of the things that I think is critically important is also what's to talk about, one of the best colleges and one of the most affordable colleges in the UNC system. I also like the fact that our graduates are making very competitive compensation when I leave our university. High percentages of them are recruited by the nation's top graduate and professional schools. That's a big deal for us. I thought I ought to share this with you as well. I like winning. I think winning is important. I like winning it the right way. My AD would certainly, as I put more and more pressure on him to ensure that we're recruiting the right coaches and et cetera. As you can see, I arrived here in 2009, we won very few championships. But as you can see now, we are winning at least 50, 60% of all of our championships in our conference. That's a big deal. Bright students, faculty and staff, and collaborators want to partner with winners. And we like winning, winning not just in athletics, but winning across our research, academic programs, and the role we play as a university as well. We consider ourselves to be a big town-and-gown partner in this community. We like engaging with our business leaders and community leaders, not only in athletics, but in the business community, as well as with our credible, talented students in our arts and humanities degree programs. We have incredible theater, music, and art on our campus. And these incredibly bright students allow us to excite and enthuse this community in very significant ways. So we enjoy what we do. It's most demanding, to say the least, but what we try to do here is make a difference. And I think we are indeed making a difference in our community and as a state asset for our university system as well. And so again, we're delighted to have you on our campus. We have a lot of work to do here, but while you're here, we want to make sure that all of your needs have been met as well. And I certainly do look forward to enjoying you for lunch as well. I'm not sure if I had time for a question or two, otherwise I'll end at this moment. And we can begin lunch.
Sure. Yeah, we've got time for questions. What happened?
Any burning question? I know I talk a lot and I try not to talk too fast, but if there are any specific questions, I'll certainly be with you during lunch. Again, enjoy your stay on our campus. And again, we're delighted to have you with us. Thank you very much.
Chancellor Martin, thank you so much for having us and for all the great things you're doing for this community and for our state. And in particular, thank you for those terrific teachers that your education school sends us each year. We'll take every one of them. Okay. So now we're going to take a short break and go grab lunch and then come back quickly back to your seats because we've got more exciting things to do. And so let's take about five minutes, grab a lunch or something to drink, and we'll get going.[1715.77]